Recorder on? Oh shoot, no. Hold on. I always get yelled at about this. Can I switch seats with somebody?
I'm taking a picture of her calling her first.
Hang on, now you gotta hit the camera again.
Can I take your picture Janet? Calling your first meeting to order.
I got that.
I'm asking permission.
Yes. I think it's on.
Okay.
You gotta hit the camera. You gotta hit the camera again. Okay.
I have it. Grant.
Okay, I'd like to call the monthly work session, uh, December twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. Let the record show that all council members are present with the exception of Don Nelson. So. First thing, um, any changes to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay Janet.
I just wanna add, um, that I'll be speaking a little bit about spectrum.
Spectrum. Spectrum update?
Yep.
Um, just one thing before we get into the discussion items, um, and I'll probably mention something during the council meeting next month, but I just wanted to recognize and thank the fire department and the FPLA for the, uh, Christmas parade and the, and the Santa parade. I think that was a really nice thing and it's a great thing for volunteers in our community, you know, to make this place a more enjoyable place to live, so.
Yeah.
But we can't do it without the volunteers, so I do wanna say thank you for all the coordination that that took.
They did, nice job.
They did. Okay, Janet, let's start with you with the spectrum update.
Okay, um, I had a technician out here yesterday, um, we have to have a, the cable buried brought over from the corner of Jackson Springs Road to the building, um, had another technician here yes, today. We have to have another cable buried over by the pool and there'll be another technician arriving tomorrow, um, for the PD probably. And our cable probably will not be buried until January, uh, not, not this, not next Tuesday, the first Tuesday of January. So it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a couple more weeks before it gets done.
It would be the second, the first Tuesday is the second, so it would be the ninth.
The ninth?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and that is for the village hall. So.
So they're just doing the hall and then I'm?
Burying that one, yeah.
Okay.
And it appears that they already have, uh, the cable on the side of the PD. But I'll know more when the technician shows up. They have a time Warner box on the side of the building.
And they can't just run the village hall off of that box?
Uh, yeah, I know.
Okay.
Okay, so that, it, it's gonna be another couple of weeks before that gets completed, I think. Um, I will stay on top of them, um, but I will let velocity, I'll give them a call and give them a heads up that it's going to take place.
Do they know?
No, they'll know when I call them. Nothing against them, but, okay. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for doing that.
Okay, regarding the village pool, I, I think we're gonna have to make some decisions and we're gonna have to make some decisions sooner rather than later because this is what we're running up against. Um, a couple of weeks ago, I took a picture of the, well, I didn't take a picture, I took a picture today, of the pool and the water level. And called Danny Jackson, who does all our maintenance on the pool. And I had already gotten the estimate from him regarding the work that needs to be done with the leaks that have been identified. So I'll pass that out so you guys can see that.
I do have a copy.
You do, okay.
I'll give, I'll give one to Don and to Mary.
Okay. Um, this is just to, and you'll see which repairs they have to do there. And the reason I'm, I'm saying we need to decide is if the water level continues to go down from what it is right now, from the pictures I took today, Danny thinks it may be a leak in the lines underneath the pool running to the pump house. So I would need to get leak locators out here again, so that's gonna be a cost. And if they identify there is a leak in the lines, they are going to have to tear into the bottom of the pool.
Why does he, what, what leads him to believe there's a leak in the line?
Okay, because when I talked to him, I said, "The water level is below the lights", which is where we identified that there are leaks.
The seals on the lights.
Right. I said, "Danny, if the leaks are in the lights, why is the water still going down?" That's when he said, "It's gotta be the, um, underneath the pool, the lines."
So, so he's, he's certain that there's no structural issues in the water on, below the lights? And how, how does he, how does he, how can he be sure that there's no structural damage that's causing the leak below there?
Well, they did, you know, when they were here the last time, they did, you know, the, what was the main, the expansion joint? They identified that as a problem. That's been fixed. The lights, when we had those done, were a, it was a, it was a quick fix. It was a temporary fix and we knew that. As to give us something so we can keep the pool open for the season. So, yeah, and, but now it has to be repaired and that's what this estimate is.
This is the, the?
And there are no other possible areas in the bottom of the pool that could be the?
The expansion joint would be it.
That's the only?
Yes. Yes. The other issue as to why we need to make a decision is if we're not, we're not going with USA management, so we would need to put an ad in the paper to get a manager. We'd need to get staff hired if we're gonna open it and we can't wait until the last minute.
Right.
The other issue is, this shouldn't be, you know, we can schedule this repair. Not a problem, but if we're looking at them having to take out the bottom of the pool around to get to those lines and test them and fix them, they don't have to take it up hard to test them, but to fix it.
Why?
Yeah, is leak, is leak locator's good?
Yes.
Okay, so when they go in, if they identify that the leaks are under the bottom of the pool, that's when we get an estimate for, hey, what's it gonna cost to dig up the pool? So really, leak, leak locators?
Would not be redoing the repairs.
Right, exactly, but we need them before we even can get a concept of what the repairs are gonna look like, right?
Yeah, but Danny wants to wait a couple of weeks because of all this rain we had.
Yeah.
To see if it goes down even further than it is now, and if it does go down even further, then there is definitely a leak somewhere, other than the lights.
Well, I've got a comment on just the repair of just the lights. This, this is a set over, close to seventy-eight thousand dollars
Yep.
of repairs just for the lights, which we know are not the only problem.
This, this is just for the lights?
Yes. Look, there's cosmetic stuff that they're doing.
Oh, no, I know, but this, but this is not anything else that's wrong, like anything under the pool that could be?
Oh, right, this, this stuff's not addressed.
This is just for the, and fixing of the li, the fixing of the leaking lights for the permanent.
And I looked at one.
And, and all this other stuff, though.
Right.
They're doing a lot of stuff. He's, he's, you're right, the lights are there in G, remove and fill six pool lights, but if you look at all the other stuff, we're doing acid wash, pressure wash, fixing chips.
Yeah, well, it's gotta be done, though.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying that seventy-two thousand isn't just fixing the lights.
No, 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 no.
That's quite an extensive list that's associated with that.
It's still, it's still money that, you know, I don't think, we have to think that we're investing.
Well, let me just tell you what we spent last year on the pool. Uh, I'm gonna round up, sixty-two thousand. Now, if we add seventy-two thousand?
That's just sixty-two thousand for maintenance?
Everything for the pool.
Running, running the pool.
So that's the management company, that's the electric bill.
Yep, everything, trash removal, insurance, telephone, permits, operations.
Repairs?
Yep, repairs, so sixty-two thousand dollars. Now, if you wanna add, and I'm gonna round it up to seventy-three, um, okay, 'cause that's what, approximately gonna be about sixty-two thousand. Again, sixty, if not more, so you're looking at about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for just operation repairs, and that's without knowing if we have another leak.
Right, that's what bothers me.
Yes, and, and I don't anticipate if we have another leak under the pool, that that is gonna be a quick fix. Because there aren't gonna be very many companies that we can call that can come and do it.
Yeah.
So I would be surprised, I'm trying to think of I'm trying to think of a reason that there would be any reason for lines to be underneath the pool. The lot, service lines, the service lines are around the outside, not, not.
It's, it's the intake, outtake.
But that's not underneath, I don't think. The out, the drain certainly.
Yeah, and it's from the drain to the pump house and back and the filtering and all that.
Yeah, but, but again, so there, I think, you, you know a lot more than I do, but, but from what I understand, yes, there's a drain line that comes out from underneath it, but that's the only thing that comes out from underneath. Everything else is serviced from, from, from the edges. So, the, so there's that. Um, but, what I wanted to ask is this leak locator company, uh, are they, they're the ones that can test the lines to see if there's a leak, right? As far as that's concerned. And, and I think, yeah, I think that's, that's, that, that we need to have so that we can have some educated guess.
Right, so what, he's gonna, he wants them to pressure test all the plumbing lines to and from the pool. Skimmers, main drains, and return lines.
Who's, and who's that, Danny?
That's Danny.
Yeah, that makes sense.
If you don't have an estimate?
And that's probably another, 'cause they're pretty expensive, that's probably another two to three, five thousand dollars, so we can tag that onto this.
Yeah.
But we really don't have a plan for what to do with it until they do their stuff, right? I mean, that, they're, they're the big unknown.
But, and I can call them, they come out pretty quick.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah.
But, um, and, but I wanted to wait to, to get your feedback. I think we should go ahead and have them tested because I don't think we can make an educated decision without knowing if any of this needs to be repaired.
Well, and another thing that I think you've talked about, and I might as well just bring it up as well, is, is that there's also a very old pump, correct?
Well, no, we're okay with the pump for right now, Danny said, it's a couple of years old, um.
Oh, I thought it was older than that.
The, the, the.
The structure's in bad shape.
Yeah. We don't wanna tamper with that right now, though.
Right.
Because we have to, right now, we are grandfathered in with the health department on that pump house. Yeah, we're grandfathered.
Right.
And if we do anything to it, we have to redo it.
Gotcha.
I just think this is something that the town and the council really needs to look at as, is this a wise use of taxpayer money? And that's kind of where I'm gonna leave it. Obviously, we have to get off that.
Yeah.
But.
Well, we brought in, and sorry to interrupt, ten thousand dollars last year. That was it. That didn't come in chemicals.
Right. A, and it's never made, it's never made money, it's always been a, a, um, benefit. Um, but it is definitely, um, I, I would really question the use of taxpayer money on some of this stuff. Let's see what leak locators says.
I'm good with the leak guys because really, until we know what they say, there's no, you can't really.
And I, I wanted to do that, but I wanted to get your feedback before.
But we already know that this is a, is a given. The eighty thousand is a given.
As a new finance officer, that doesn't make me happy, but that's okay.
Yeah.
Plus, we have got our new wellhouse, which is, that's gonna be, bringing that new well online is gonna be what another? It's gonna be at least about two hundred something.
Wow.
That's a thigh already.
But, yeah, I guess.
Not all, not, it's gonna drain a huge, it's gonna drain a huge amount of the water department reserves, so.
And, you know, I'm, depending on what leak locators says, um, let, let's just take it out of the equation that they say, "You're good to go." We're still looking at a hundred and, what did I say, thirty-five thousand dollars? For a couple hundred residents.
Well, it's not even residents, 'cause I thought half of the people that used it were not Foxfire residents.
Right, we had, okay, now this is ticket sales, and I was at that pool most every day and usually saw the same people. So for residents, they sold twelve hundred tickets, daily tickets. I can't tell you how many were repeats, but based on the year before, you're looking at a couple hundred residents. We sold eight hundred and fifty-four non-resident daily passes. Again, can't tell you how many were repeats. I kept seeing the same people over and over.
So is that eight hundred and fifty-four plus the twelve?
Yeah.
So, so two thousand?
Times five, five bucks, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so two thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, you know, we, you know, we've ti, tiptoed around this for all, all last year about having a tipping point where we go out to the village and say, "What do, what do you wanna do?"
Well, that's what, on our long-range plan, it's one of the items is the cost-benefit analysis on, on evaluating what we do with the pool and, and, and actually giving the, the citizens something to look at, to say, "This is what this is gonna cost," and that's kind of what, what I wanna do when I get to my section of the, of this meeting is to get us a to-do list, and that's gotta, I think that's gonna be one of the.
That's a driver.
Yeah, that's gotta be the number one priority at this point, and priorities are gonna change based on what comes up and this has now come up.
Well, and this might be one of those, uh, you know, let's just say there is a, an additional leak. Do we say we'll close it for the summer? Get anything?
You get all the numbers and you put all the numbers up and you, I mean, you need to be able to afford to do it, number one, and then you have to look at the cost-benefit. I mean, if you're only putting a Band-Aid on it and then next year we face the same thing and we do the same thing and then we're in the, do we build a new pool? We gotta tank two hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand dollars before we get there, and that's not a good use of money.
You're not, you're, you're looking at a million bucks for a new pool, if not more. And, and here's the thing, and I've said this many times, an average lifespan of a, of a cement pool's twenty-five to thirty years old. We're at fifty. And, 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 you know, I say this, but Danny keeps telling me every time I talk to him, "You guys are way past your life on that pool."
Well, it's, and, and again, it was a good idea when it was ten years old or whenever we inherited. It, it was kind of a very simple decision, 'cause it wasn't costing a lot, and now just the maintenance on it, it's like, uh, turning into a, I don't wanna say a money pit, but it is, yeah, turning into a money pit.
And you know, the thought of doing a new pool, when I moved here to Foxfire, we had the Woodland Circle debt. This village couldn't financially breathe and the interest rates were way lower than they are now. I mean, that's, if you, if, if people need to understand, you do that per person on the tax increase, that's, that's insane. And it's also, it might also not be financially smart, because it puts us in a position where we don't have any flexibility. If we get a mandate from the state to do something that costs money and we're a million bucks into a pool, it's an instant tax increase. You won't be able to avoid it, and I don't wanna do that.
No, I, and I, I agree, and like you said, if you compare it to the Woodland Circle decisions, which in retrospect were terrible.
Right.
Um, we don't wanna make those same mistakes.
And, and now that we know what it's like, when the village, we couldn't buy an extra roll of toilet paper until that was all taken care of, and we couldn't do that to the village again, that would just be unwise.
Yeah.
Really unwise.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I, I like the pool, I like having a pool, I do, I use it. But when it's, you're looking at, do we raise the taxes to what extent for, uh, an amenity that a couple hundred people use out of, what did we look at, fifteen hundred? You know, I, I don't know, this is, it, I'm telling you, it's a tough decision, um, you know, and like I said, let's find out leak locators comes up with.
Leak locators, the leak boys.
And, and I'm gonna try and get them out before our next meeting.
That would be great, just give us a little more information.
Yeah. But keep that in mind, um, this is not something we can sit on
No.
because there's way too many decisions that, that have to be made before the summer.
Because it's, it's January.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we got, you know, we're gonna start working on budget in probably two months, tops.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, the, the sad part is we got so many streets that need work.
Exactly.
I mean, that's.
Well, and that's, that's the whole thing. All right, let's get leak locators out here and find out where we are.
I'll call them tomorrow.
And then, um,
Okay.
one step at a time on this one.
Well, and I'm sorry I didn't call, I just wanted to get everybody's okay with doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a priority, we gotta get it done.
All right.
But I, I agree that we need to find out where we're at. We gotta get that leak locator people to give us a definitive answer.
Okay.
Okay, next up is, thank you, anything else Janet?
No, anybody have any other questions? Mm-mm, okay. Gary?
Next up is, uh, Gary.
Yes, you guys know I like to do powerpoint.
Oh, boy.
So, uh, this is, oh, look, I misspelled Foxfire. Take, wait, take two.
How long have you lived here?
Take two. Uh, okay, so this is, this is kind of a culmination of an awful lot of work by a lot of different people, bringing it to this point where I, I believe that they've submitted a plan, and this was through coordination of the, uh, management company up in, uh, Pennsylvania, Aaron Schroder, Schrader, and he's the chief agronomist for Brown Golf. He took over this, uh, plan because of what we ended up with right now, so.
Really, okay.
Yeah, uh, well, and, and it was, and of course, that was all brought to his attention by this council, uh, to let them know, and of course, they lost their certificate of occupancy and.
They did?
Well, that's, I, I understood it wasn't issued, but I, I guess it was and it was pulled. I, I, that's a whole other story.
I did not know that.
Well, I, I didn't either, I didn't think, but, and either way, uh, the, the council says we need to get it fixed, so, uh, over the last few months, they've been working on this plan, they submitted this plan last week, uh, for me to be able to present it to you, uh, today. So they have hired, uh, Aurora Hills Landscaping, they're based out of Pine, uh, Pine Bluff, North Carolina, so the plannings that we're going to see were created by them and they're going to be the main contractor for, uh, all the landscaping and the different materials that are gonna be used for that. Surrounding the, uh, document that I'm gonna show you, that you have the picture of, in the corner, or in those little shaded gray spots, are all of the Moore County requirements for this project.
These?
Nope, these.
Oh, okay.
So, and I'll, I'll, I'll highlight them here in a minute when I show you the.
You mean like building requirements?
Yes. So, and she, they got that from, um, from Lisa. So, um, so again, this is, this is a culmination of the agreements that were made uh, and agreed upon between Foxfire Golf Club and Village, uh, that we've already talked about. These are the things we're holding our feet to the fire on, uh, to get this plan completed. So they are giving an estimated completion date of the landscaping portion of approximately February fifteenth of next year. And then, separate from that, and I, I do wanna make a, draw a line here, because the building is one thing, the next piece of this is that fenced-in area where they currently have, and I'll show you pictures to refresh your memory, where they currently have, um, their equipment, uh, they've got a lot of broken downstairs, it's very, very, um.
It's bad.
It really looks bad.
Is that? Is that up here or?
Yeah, so as you're, as you're coming into the club.
Yeah.
Club's off to the left, if you go straight ahead, there's a, there's a porta potty sitting there right in front of a green fence.
I thought they took that down.
Nope.
No, it's like twelve feet high, never should've been there.
Wait a minute, okay, so I'm going down Foxfire Boulevard like I'm going to the golf course? Is it, no?
No, no, so pull in to the parking lot.
Oh, it's in the parking, okay, never mind, never mind.
It's on the backside.
Okay, I've not been down there.
Yeah, backside.
Okay.
Um, okay, so there's a plan, you already have that, this is really for the benefit of the, um, of the audience there. So these little gray, um, I don't have a pointer.
Here, here.
All of these are, are the Moore County, uh, pieces that they extracted and published as part of the plan. Really, the, the reason for that was to show that they're meeting that and exceeding that as well. Uh, and again, I'm not gonna go through all the details of this, but I did wanna highlight a couple of different things. So this is the materials list, uh, and again, note, really for, for Don, he wanted to make sure that we got the irrigation in there, and it is in there as part of the quote. So they're going to be irrigate, putting in an irrigation system that's, that's outlined in the plan that you've, that you've seen.
So go back, the, how big is a, a five gallon, no, just go back to the, yeah, that one, versus a, a three gallon? Anybody know?
Three gallon, five gallon, five gallon is good sized.
Five gallon is like?
It's good sized.
It's like a five gallon pail of paint?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so it's, I don't know how tall they are, um, but I know Aurora, Aurora Hills is.
Well, they're looking at, remember, at the top, two oaks, eight to ten feet, that's good.
Right, yeah, they're just saying the five gallon, they don't say how tall they are, but they're, I bet the, of course, Creek Myrtles don't really hide much, but.
Right.
They've got a lot of three gallons on there, too.
The fence is gonna be the swing gate, they call it a swing barrier, they're gonna paint it green.
Now, where is that gonna be, oh, in the front, the entrance, okay.
That'll be the entrance way. So, before I go on to that, so 'cause I do, 'cause I do, 'cause I do wanna keep these separate. Um, I, if, if you don't have any questions today, that's fine, please take a look at it, though I would like to respond back to them and give them the green light by next week if we, if we could, so if, if you don't mind, take a, take a little deeper dive, if you want to.
Well, how do we, are you gonna set a PowerPoint?
Yes, that'd be fine.
Yeah, that'd be great, then I.
So this is, this is this fenced-in area.
Can, can I ask, I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
Um, are they gonna be painting the doors, the garage doors?
No.
They're just gonna be white like that?
Yeah.
That whole building is supposed to be green.
I, 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 you said that before, but I, I'm sorry to say, nobody in, between both of those conversations that, that were documented with the council, the one with Leslie and the one with us, well, actually, the, yeah, it was with us, mentioned anything about green. I, I, 'cause you mentioned that one before.
At the time we talked about it and they said green, I assumed, when they said green, they meant the whole building in, inclusive of the doors, would be green. I doubt anybody ever brought it up, 'cause if you were doing a building, why would you put white doors?
Well, I, I, well.
Those are cheaper.
I don't know, I don't know, but I can only tell you that.
Well, if you can't see it, then you.
There's nothing in there. There was nothing in our agreements.
Okay, then you can't, you can't hold points to the fire now. You could ask, but you can't force them.
Right.
I mean, they could paint it, but you can't force them to do it if it's not in writing.
That's right.
And we didn't, we didn't discuss, I can tell you, we did not specifically discuss doors.
That's why in the future, I want to have a color rendering of the completed building.
Yeah, it's unfortunate how this all came about and it is, I mean, I'll just leave it at that. It's unfortunate that we're here today
Yeah.
doing this, because this really isn't our job. But, but we're here today to.
No, let me ask you, all of these are gonna be planted, right?
There's, there's some that are existing, because there's some, I provided in there and they've included that in their plan.
Okay.
Uh, the one question I've got for them is to take out the ones that have already died and put, and put.
Well, they haven't had no irrigation.
Correct.
Oh, wait, they had a lot of rain up there this week, though.
Right, yeah. So this, this plan, as you'll see, and I, and I'll send it to you, uh, you can kinda zoom in. It actually talks about the, the pine straw that they're gonna, it's very detailed, I, I think it'll be.
Can I ask a question out, I mean, to get in your, in your stuff, but
No, not my stuff.
Did they give us an indication what the growth rate is of the lengths they're gonna put in?
They, so we, 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 this council. They, so, we, 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 this council had, had talked about this, um, urban camouflage.
Yeah.
And that must've been mentioned fifteen, twenty times.
There's no definition.
That, that's correct, because when I talked to, when I talked to Aaron out there, he says, what are you talking about? I said, well, I said.
There is no such thing.
Says, I think bottom line, what they're trying to say is they don't, they wanna minimize the impact, the sightlines to the building as much as possible. So, it's not, I, I would tell you that their plantings are not, upon initial planting, going to hide the building.
Oh, no, I, no, I, no, I understand that. I'm just wondering about their growth rate.
Yeah, they do include, uh, some of those details in the plan.
Okay, alright, cool.
Okay, but that, but that's a good, that's a good, uh, good, good point.
Well, the camellias are gonna be, um, they'll, they will hide, and they have some hollies here too. Now, the oaks and the dogwoods and stuff like that, they're not gonna hide the building.
No, they might look nice, and dogwoods are slow growers.
Um. Like the hollies and the, and the camellias will, and the arbivide, if they're not half inch tall, should grow.
They didn't put any wax myrtles in.
No, they didn't put any wax myrtles in, and I can't believe.
Which actually, you know, where the solar farm is.
Right.
They have, with no irrigation, filled in reasonably well, and they've grown reasonably fast.
Right.
Down in Hockman, you mean?
Yeah.
Yep, those are wax myrtles. And they're pretty resilient.
Well, I'll tell you what, those green giants we planted by our house, we started out about four feet. They're probably, um, fifteen, sixteen feet now in three years.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, um.
Okay.
They expect this to be shielding the building. Okay? I, I guess my comment would be, I'm sorry.
No, no.
I, I would think that. And, and again, I don't know what all of these are, other than I know oaks and crape myrtles aren't going to hide the building.
Even when they're taller.
Right, they're just gonna shade. Um, I would love to see some, you know, wax myrtles. Un, unless they can, unless they can say that there's, there is something here and they intend to have it X of X percent camouflaged within, you know, a certain timeframe, right?
Yeah, well, and, and so, and I was looking for timeframes. Um, so his comment, as it relates to his coordination with the landscaping company, indicates that the variety of plantings are, and the chosen plantings are based, based on the current growing environment, the, the soil conditions around the area, said includes a vast variety of species, maturity heights, low, middle, middle, tall, uh, tall, and then growth habits and colors, which they believe, according to landscaping company, will provide depth and character to the landscape. Uh, and eventually, you know, will hide the majority of the maintenance facility.
Do they say, do they really say it'll hide the majority of the maintenance facility?
Yeah, cause so far, I didn't hear that. It'll provide depth and character to the landscaping surrounding the maintenance facility.
That doesn't mean that they're, that they're camouflaging the building though.
Well, and again, he referenced the urban camouflage.
Which.
He said, he says, uh, this is, this plan is built that not only provides the urban camouflage, the, the village is looking for it, but also provides an aesthetically pleasing variety of plantings. So, I'm, I'm not an arbivide, or I'm not a, a plant person, so I, I, if there are specific questions, I can certainly go back and get them answered. Uh, and that's really the purpose of this, would be to say, okay, if you have questions about this, let me know what they are. I'll, I'll go ask the question and then get a response back.
Ask them to define urban camouflage.
He can't, cause he asked me.
Or, what I would say, well, I think.
Cause the village just wanted to say it, I guess.
I think my, my question would be is, I see that they have a lot of trees, which I can see, you know, they'll have tall trees and crape myrtles, and that's great. Doesn't seem that there's very many tall bushes, like holly trees that are going to, to block, you know, or really break up that building. Hollies, um, and they do have hollies and they do have camellias, but I don't think they have a lot of them.
Well, I'm looking at how, where they're all planted. This seems like an awful lot.
I just can't see, yeah, I know, but a lot of them are small or they're the trees, and the trees aren't going to camouflage the building.
I'm not looking for, for characters. I'm looking for concealment.
Right, oak trees.
Yeah, that's what we need.
Cause they've got live oaks, crape myrtles, a willow oak, or red maples. Those aren't gonna hide the, the building.
Wax myrtles would hide the building. Hollies would hide the building.
But they have a holly, Savannah holly, now, yeah, I don't know, is that a holly tree or is it a holly bush? I don't know.
It's a foster holly and a Savannah holly.
Right, and I guess maybe maturity height on some of these things.
Okay, that's, that's a good question. What are they?
Because we know what holly trees are, but some of them, some of the hollies are bushes, and they don't.
You need, you need width, you need width and height.
Right.
Okay, that's a great, that's a great point.
That's a good way to ask it.
And that, you know, junipers, we know what they are, um.
I know what a rain sensor is.
But, you know, and, but I don't, and now I don't see camellias in here, but I see them. I saw them. Oh, the camellia sus.
That must be a variety.
I could've sworn I saw a camellia japonica somewhere.
Camellia sausage.
Yeah, I see it.
But anyway, um, again, are that, how tall do they get? Like you said, the width and, and height.
Width and height.
Got it. Yeah, it's a great question.
I think that's really.
I'll follow.
Yeah, and a couple of those things too, like the crape myrtles look nice when they're bloomed, but they're ugly as sin in the winter when they're bare. Um, do maples drop their leaves here?
Yes.
Okay, there's another one that's gonna be bare.
The oaks will too.
Yeah.
Eventually. Again, those are not gonna, they're not going to hide the building.
They're not concealers.
No, they're just providing shade and depth.
I mean, they need some plantings that's going to be green all year.
Exactly.
You know what would really break up the vision of that building, and I mentioned this before, as you're going, I don't know if you ever drive down, sure you do, you drive down Hoffman Road from the center of Foxfire. If they were to plant a few lines of hollies prior to the building, they, you wouldn't be able to see it as you're driving. You know, if they had like a few rows of hollies or wax myrtles or something in like a, uh, kinda like a, like a, kinda like a burn, but that doesn't have to be in a burn. If they just kinda, like where the pine trees are, and maybe they can't plant anything under the pines that will grow, I don't know.
Dogwoods will.
But, yeah, but they won't.
Bush, I mean, yeah.
But that's just one comment, that I know they're planting a lot around the building, but if they could plant some prior to the building as you're driving down Hoffman Road to block that.
It would bring your eye to those plants as opposed to.
It would break it up.
We're not like golf course property or?
Yes, it's kinda like.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not following.
If, if you're driving down Hoffman Road, right, driving down Hoffman Road, and the building is on your.
Okay, so this, this is, this is the roadway going into the golf course.
Right, I'm talking about.
Where's Hoffman, so here's the entrance.
Right, I'm talking about you're down here, like way down here, Hoffman Road.
Okay.
Like in the middle or?
So, coming this way.
Right, no, going towards the golf course.
Yeah, so coming this way.
You're going south.
Yep, we're, we're coming this way.
Right, and if they were to plant, if they were to plant like a few rows of, of trees prior to the building, like i- in your line of sight, if you drive down, you'll know exactly what I mean. If they could break up that line of sight with some, again, some big hollies or, um, yeah, or, I would say hollies or wax myrtles would be.
Wax myrtles is a great.
A great, cause then pre-maintenance, you can let them grow.
I can, I can ask them. I, I think that's kinda out of what we're been talking about.
It is, but it, but they could probably cut down on a lot of what they're planting here, because you're breaking up the view.
Certainly coming that way, but not that way, right?
Well, that way you're not gonna see much, cause you're kinda, it's all woods until you get right to the building.
Right, because there is a large section of, like blank, I'm gonna call it blank road or, or space.
Right.
Before the building as you're going south.
Correct.
And when you put the plantings in, people are, as they're driving, are gonna be looking at the plantings per se, and you're gonna be past the building by the time your eyes are going, wait a minute, was there a building there? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
It, it's an optical illusion basically.
Right, and as they grow, you won't see the building as you're driving down Hoffman.
Right, so you're gonna be past the building, and you're going, okay, that's okay.
I mean, even if they put like maybe ten, you know, well-placed, larger trees or bushes, um, I think it would make a huge difference. That's just a comment that I have, and maybe the arborist would understand that, what I'm saying. Or Aurora might understand my concept.
I definitely, I think, I, as I, as it relates to this plan, uh, getting the width and height of those is perfect. And then I will let them know about what we talked about with.
There's one thing that kinda concerns me a little bit, and that is that it's, what they've given us is complicated. And they, we might do better to have a few varieties and things that we know will not take a lot of extra care. I mean, like they've got a nandina on there. Nandinas only get about two and a half feet tall. You know, they've got a lot of variety, but I don't know if all the variety is really gonna get, and maybe, I'm not, I mean, I'm not the horticultural person, but it would seem to me that the simpler the better, the hardier the better, and the more bushing the better.
Yes.
And some of the ornamental stuff, not that a nandina's orn- ornamental, but I mean, I have them, and they don't get very big.
Depending on the species, you're right. I mean, they might, they might get, you know, I don't think they get, you know, six, ten feet, not generally.
Yeah, no.
But I think if they, more is not necessarily better.
Yeah, I agree.
I guess what I'm.
And it becomes overcrowded at that point.
Right.
Or more difficult to contain. And, and if it's not well maintained, well, and look at the bushes as you're driving into, towards the, um, golf course, the, the golf club. The bushes along the side of the road on the left have never been maintained and they look terrible.
Right.
So, you can put the bushes there, but if you're not going to maintain them and keep them in shape.
But they are, right? Cause they're gonna, they're putting in irrigation lines and stuff.
Well, they'll, they just won't die, but you know, there is a, I mean, there's a lot.
You have to trim plants every once in a while, and, you know, make them look good. And those plants that are on the left side as you're going to the golf course have never been maintained. And, and I, I'll tell you what, that looks horrible as you're driving into the golf course, and that's their responsibility.
And I appreciate that, but that you're saying that. We, we need to be careful that we, that when we throw our stones.
Yeah.
That we're taking care of, because.
Yeah.
Our areas, our areas the village is responsible for.
Right.
Are pretty nasty, pretty nasty. But, great, thank you very much.
Okay, we'll get into that later. Let's finish this.
Let's do that. So, and then the other part, of course, this, this, yeah, well, this is the other part of the plan, which was all kind of handshake agreement that we said, this is what we're expecting. And so, beyond, beyond the, the building, we said, you've gotta get rid of that maintenance area or clean it up. So, this is the recommendation for what they're going to do. So, they're going to reduce, well, you can read it. Uh, reduce, but re- reduce it by fifty percent. Uh, they are gonna put, they have to put fuel, chemicals, and, and those things in that area.
In the fenced-in area?
Okay, I got a problem with that, and here's what it is. That fence is not legal.
They're gonna change, well, they're gonna.
I mean, i- if you look at recreational district, there is no provision for a chain link fence.
I, but I thought that they had gotten the okay from the council to put that there.
Well, temporarily. That whole thing was supposed to be temporary. And I don't, I don't, we need to throw up a red flag, but.
Well, no, the, the problem I'm running into is I'm basing the, the, the coun, some council said it was okay, and now we're saying it's not okay.
Well, no.
And I'm alright with.
When it was first put in, the council was okay with it, because it was always meant to be temporary.
So, so, so we heard.
So, I brought it up from a zoning perspective a couple times and said, guys, look, at least make them pay a special use permit. I mean, they have, if the people in the townhouses complained about that fence, which thank God they haven't, but if they did, they would have legitimate right to say, hey, that's not even, that's not allowable, that's not allowable fencing material. Nor is the height correct.
Right, we can't be doing these, you know, off-the-cuff agreements.
Yeah, these verbal agreements.
There's, there's no documentation, and, and yes, I'm sure it was done in the past, and yes, I'm sure it was, oh, we'll just be temporary. But with the golf course, since I've been on the council, it's always been a, a tug to get them to do things.
You, you have to remember the timing though. The golf course was in bankruptcy, and Brown Golf had just purchased it. And they chose not to purchase the maintenance area along Richmond Road. So, the fence there was kind of a, oh, hallelujah, the col, the course isn't in bankruptcy anymore, we'll give you a temporary storage space.
And you know what?
That's about ten years ago.
That, that's okay, but the problem with, we'll give that to you as a temporary, it's never written down.
Right, I know, I agree.
Now, where is this? This is in their parking lot?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I thought I had a better picture.
That's okay. I, I have not seen this, but this is, this is awful.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, I, I, yes, it is. Um, and of course, the, the, the sand piles, uh, those will go, uh, when, 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 when the maintenance building is al- when they're allowed to enter and, and do, uh, when we give them certificate of occupancy, that stuff moves out.
That, that sand moves to the maintenance area, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and that was, that was something that, that we talked about in the very beginning.
Yep. So, fencing material, got it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good.
And of course, it's gonna be cleaned up, and, yeah, it's horrible. He, and he, he, he recognizes that it's horrible.
You know, if they can clean up that area, eh, eh, the, I'd rather have it behind the fence, to be honest with you.
Yeah, and this is, and this is a picture that's behind the fence. I, I'm inside the fenced area there. So, but again, he, he calls it out specifically, garbage and broken equipment, all, all new. They're getting, and then they're gonna bring that footprint in for just the, what the areas that they need for the gas, chemicals, and, and all of that.
When they say reposition, you mean they're gonna shrink it, Karen?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it says.
Fifty percent.
Yeah. Footprint reduced.
Yeah, they better, they better get a little approval before they start moving that thing.
So, this is howie. What's that?
I think that we need to know how much they're gonna shrink it and where they tend to reposition, where they tend to reposition it to.
Okay.
I mean, I, I just kinda, I, the whole thing, only because it's not.
No, I got you. I, I think they should provide us with a plan, just like, just like they did for the maintenance building, for what they plan to do, for this. I think that's a good, good report.
Yeah, and I don't know, you know, Gary, the guy you're dealing with, he may not even know that that storage area was meant to be temporary. I mean, we've gone through six general managers, I mean, you know, it's there, I'm gonna use it. If it wasn't, if it wasn't there, I wouldn't use it, but it's there, so I'm gonna use it, and you can't.
And that's why this stuff is not in writing. It's, now we're working on good faith, is, is what we're working on.
GM every two years, so you don't get much passed down.
Now, it says, with the acceptance of this plan, we will begin working right away to facilitate in a timely manner a request of certificate of occupancy being reissued, so we can begin moving into our much-needed new maintenance facility. I, um, I, this certificate of occupancy can't be issued until this landscaping is done.
Well, but wait a minute, the landscaping isn't supposed to be completed until February.
Yeah, right.
Well, and part of it's not supposed to be completed until about six months after, right, Gary, those first lines?
I thought the June was the, uh, the fence area.
Well, February, February was, whoops.
February was one, and then another one was June.
Yeah, that was the corral.
So, February fifteenth was, was the.
That's when they'll get their CO, because if they don't do it, and if they don't do it, it's not like you can take the CO back.
Oh, no, I agree. I agree with that.
I'm good.
They better, you know, maybe they should allow the date.
I mean, if they also push their completion date up.
Right, if they want their CO sooner, they need to finish, they need to finish this landscaping.
And I, I don't know what plant, when you can plant all these things.
You can plant now.
Can you?
I, I don't know why not. Everything's dormant anyway.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's up to them. They don't have to drag it out till February.
That's not that long.
I know, it's a month.
Yeah, I mean, how long has it looked the way, I mean, come on. They dragged their feet on the landscaping to begin with.
But, but I think we need to, you know, whatever, at the end, read everything and make sure everything we want is in writing.
Right, right.
Yes, agree. Uh, and, and, and that's what we're gonna, we're, we're gonna do.
I always went on the premise, if it's not in writing, it don't happen.
Now, it says the, um, estimated cor, oh, existing corral plan. That's what, the plan is estimated completion of six, one. Is that the?
For the corral. That's the fenced-in area.
But do they have a plan for it, or, cause they have a plan, but they don't have a drawn. But do they have a plan for it, or, cause they have a plan, but they don't have a drawn plan?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, got it.
But I do have a note here that we want a drawn plan for that.
Okay.
And they're, you know, he also calls out the fact that with the timeframe is ideal for us and for the, to get this work done. So I think they're, they're waiting for us to give them the green light to start. And what I, what I've gotten from the council, just I wanna report back to you guys, is we, we basically, we wanna know the width and the height of what's gonna be planted, and then what is maturity.
Yeah.
I'm also gonna point out the fact that you guys had talked about plants that are going to die, sorry, go dormant. Not die.
Deciduous.
Yeah, there you go. So glad you're on, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll talk about the fact that a lot of these are going to go bare during the winter. I'm gonna mention about the hollies, or something tall before, like the breaking up the sightline you guys talked about.
Wax myrtles.
Uh, I'll make note of the fact that more isn't necessarily better, I like that. And then, and then talk to them about the, letting them know that a certificate of occupancy will not be issued until this is done.
Yep. And the hollies, and just mention wax myrtles too.
Yeah.
Just, you know, possible.
Or, and or.
And or wax myrtles.
Okay. And then, and then as far as the fenced-in area, find out about fencing material, I need to, I need to know exactly what, I'll look it up, but.
You can look it up, but I'm happy to help you with it.
Okay. What they need to do for fencing, and then, but mainly though, I think what I'm really gonna get across is, we need a plan.
Yep.
We need to have it signed and ready. Okay, cool.
The end of PowerPoint.
Yeah.
Thank you, Gary.
You betcha.
Nice job, thank you.
I can make powerpoint.
Yes, you can. And I'm gonna be talking about someone who I don't agree.
Next, are, are you, are you finished?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I didn't know if you were gonna present this, or, we do have the local government commission, the LGC response letter. Uh, when we were audited, our water system came into a situation where our capital depreciation is over fifty percent of our assets. So that in, since we've reached that threshold, LGC needs to have an action plan put in place, or, I guess you'd call it an action plan. And Gary, you wrote this up, this is great, with David and Jesse, as well as Ken, our auditor took a look at it.
In coordination with the auditor, yes.
And basically, we went through that, we've been keeping our water system and our infrastructure in great shape. Our elevated tank is on routine maintenance, fire hydrants are tested, mains appear to be in good shape. Valves you're working on, you're testing and exercising. Service lines, when they get damaged, we, we have them repaired. And we do have a comment in here that most of the time, it's either tree roots or construction, so it's not infrastructure, not our infrastructure failing. Also, we've got a new well site, which is really gonna be helpful to the stability of the system. Testing and sampling, and then we, we have beefed up our reserves and our budgeting for infrastructure.
Correct.
And, yeah, we're, I think we're in, we're in good shape.
We're in a good place. We really are in a good place.
It's not like our, our water quality is deteriorating, or our infrastructure is falling apart, so, and we're saving and investing.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, we're in a good place.
So we will get this signed and off to LGC.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that's that. Um, next thing on the list that I had were, we talked about, Gary talked about, and we said, all said it was a good idea, assigning projects to council members based on the long-range plan, so we just don't make a long-range plan and.
And let it sit.
And let it sit. So when we're going through year one, we've got, I guess the first thing here I have is the list for the mayor.
Yep.
And on my list is continuous improvement of communications with village residents, create and update all job descriptions, inspection of completed zoning permits, what are we doing to ensure that everyone gets what they're, what they're paying for, form an appearance committee and hire staff position. So, hiring of a staff position, that job has been posted, just so we know that that is, we are in the process of doing that. What does the council think is probably the most important thing? Cause I'm thinking, let's do one at a time, if, if we can. For me, it's the updating of the job descriptions. I think that's really important.
Based on, yeah, based on our executive session, I would agree.
Right. So that, to me, is probably something that's one of my main priorities, so I'm gonna make that my number-one priority.
And they're already working on those.
And they are working on, and that's, that's not something we're gonna be discussing every council meeting. That's just something that's gonna be going on in, in HR, basically. Next to that, I, I don't know, do we think an appearance committee? I don't really know if that ever really got off the ground. I don't think it did, as far as I know. I'm not sure.
I don't think we ever really came to terms as to what we wanted.
Well, I think we, I think we agreed that we wanted to keep it simple.
Right.
And that it was, it was more of a, what would you like to see, as far as the entryways to the, the, and, and starting with our properties, not, you know, citizens' properties.
Yeah.
Right. That's what I, that's what I would think.
You're talking town properties?
Right, yeah, right.
You know, here's the concern that I am looking at right now, in terms of, you know, it being a volunteer posi, position, committee. You know, we're looking for planning and zoning, two people, right? Uh, can't, can't find anybody there. You know, we need to somehow get people involved in this, and it's getting harder and harder every year.
Well, my understanding, the mayor had two volunteers, as I, my understanding, previous guy.
Yeah.
Mayor Boito.
Mayor Boito. Had two people, and as a matter of fact, we had a meeting set up, it was just only because I volunteered to help out, but they couldn't make it. But I do understand that there are two people that want to get involved.
Okay.
So I'm wondering if.
Well, two is better than none, yeah, and let me, let me find out from Don.
And then we gotta really look at what we say those people are able to do.
Yes.
Because in the UDO, their reach, you come out, I mean, they're, the way that's written, and I think we were working on.
Well, that's an appearance commission, if I'm not mistaken. We don't want an appearance commission.
Okay, okay.
This isn't appearance committee.
If they wanna talk about what our entranceway should look like, no problem, but you can't have people going on private property.
Oh, no, 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 that's not.
Got it, got it.
I can, I agree, because originally, I think we were talking about a formal, remember when I gave my big, long dissertation? But what we, what we decided as a council, we went way, way scaled way down.
Which is, I think, what's these people wanted to do too. They didn't wanna do that either.
And their job, not job, but what they were going to do was present to the council on, on, you know, at certain intervals, their recommendations for what they've observed in terms of the village, and what they might, you know, what we might be able to do.
The public areas.
Right, yes, I would love that.
And that was really all we were gonna start with.
Well, then, that, I'll, I can run that down.
Mayor Boito has those numbers.
And in, the inspection, I'm gonna look into the zoning permits as well, and see what we're doing. And I know that was going to be part of what the administrative assistant was going to be doing. So that was gonna be something that that person was going to be doing. I'm, I'm hopeful we can find a good candidate for that staff.
Yeah, because we need to be doing that sooner rather than later.
We definitely do. And we also need to be posting for a finance officer as well.
And we need to talk about job description and all that kind of stuff for that. That's a, that's a huge one.
I've got what Sharon wrote down so far, and we'll have to get, that's probably what's not on here, it has to be on here.
Yeah. Well, and I'd like to be able to find someone before Sharon retires.
Oh, my goodness.
So that she can help train the, the new hire.
I'm hoping we can get that person, if we could get him, you know, you know, two, three months in advance would be great.
Well, then we gotta get moving.
Which is today, right?
Yeah, it is. So, we need to get that done. So I guess I'll be doing all of these things. This is all.
I'll do Sharon's.
Okay.
I'm new Sharon's, just give me, just give me what she's giving to you, and I'll do it. Cause I'm gonna go and look at some of the other villages and see what theirs.
Well, we're gonna get together on the audit anyway, so we can do all that. Okay. All right, so that's for me. I'm gonna be working on probably, in tandem, all of these year-one items right now.
So we're gonna keep you busy.
Um, that's me.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Would we consider for the administrative staff person, I know we posted it as full-time.
Yes.
But if we get qualified part-time people, I would hate to see us not consider that.
I, I don't, I, I wouldn't not consider it, I just think that the job is going to be. The job is gonna be such that I don't think part-time, the commitment we're looking for is not gonna be a part-time job.
Okay.
It's going to be a job that this person is gonna grow into hopefully more responsibilities and.
All I'm saying is, we deal with Jim all the time about the available labor pool, and there are some people out there forty-five to sixty-five, they're not looking to take on the world, but they'd be solid twenty-five to thirty-hour-a-week people, and I would hate to see us not consider them.
Yeah. And, and you're right. My only, my only vision for this person is someone who's going to grow into much more than just a staff assistant. You know, someone who might be doing other duties with more responsibilities, more schooling, higher pay.
Kinda like a Jesse.
Yeah. Someone is, I, I would like to see it grow into a, a solid professional position. So that's, and I don't think a part-time person with a short timeframe of employment, I don't, I just don't think it would be a good match. But, you know, you never know who's gonna walk in the door.
A lot of money for someone you wanna have grow into professional. I mean, I'm just saying that.
Well, it's an entry-level position, but it doesn't, it, it won't, there's room for growth for the right person, is, is I guess what I'm trying to get at.
Well, and I think that's important. It's kinda like when we advertised for Jesse's position, our goal was to have somebody that's gonna be much more than just this, and I think that's helpful for somebody who's looking for a growth opportunity. I wanna get involved, and, but I wanna see that there's, you know, there's a gold ring that I'm gonna really wanna go after.
Right, right.
I think that's a good motivation.
Okay, so why don't we go down the finance list next?
Oh, uh, hold on, I'm sorry, before we get to governance, if you don't mind. So there are a couple things that we can do without really doing much at all. First of all, the report of general ordinance enforcement. Don should, could ask that that be part of the normal police report, which is.
Wait, what are you talking about?
I'm on bullet point sub-point one, two, three.
Are you still the mayor?
I'm on the mayor page. What page are you on? Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. I put that, I put that up.
My page.
You're on the plan, the whole.
Yeah, we're on the plan, sorry. Okay, mayor.
Sorry. So that was just the mayor's plan for year one, and I'm gonna be working on everything right now.
Okay.
Oh, gotcha, yeah. I agree with all of that.
I bet you do.
See, I already marked everything on this page, so I didn't know you broke it down that.
So then, for the finance person, didn't I hand the hollies out?
Yes, you did.
Yeah, I didn't bring mine, so.
Year one for finance was, continue to seek the public safety grants, and really, Chad does most of that, but you can probably just check in with him to see what, what he's up to.
I like to add credit cards for ACH website or third-party service, that's a big deal.
It is, and I think that's something.
That's, to me, if you asked me my top priority, that is the thing I was drawn after it.
Okay.
Because if we can get that done, and the new person comes in, and that's how it's already set up, then that's just how it is.
Well, you'll still be getting checks.
Well, I know, I know, but, yeah.
But there'll be, no, I think, credit card, and I think, I don't think we wanna do credit card but ACH, because if you get into credit card trace processing. Yeah. If you do credit card processing, it kinda puts you into a whole new or different.
Well, okay, so.
Cause then you have fees you have to pay, and are you gonna charge more because they're using a credit card for water payments?
So can we also set up the water billing, so it's, people can pay online ACH?
That's what, that's what.
That's what we're talking about, in addition to vendors.
Oh, I don't know about vendors. What do you mean, like vendors?
Well, like, instead of having to sign checks and stuff, you just pay those people ACH.
I don't know if we can do that.
Okay, all right.
I don't know, I think, cause we need two signatures on all of our checks. I don't think you can.
Yeah, I think that's.
You can't do, you can't do bill pay.
For municipal?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I don't think our audit, especially the size that we are.
Okay.
We can't, right. I think that's the most important thing that we need to, and I would, I would like to see that to be what you work on right now, I would say.
We're talking ACH only.
Yeah, and I'd say, let's start just with the water payments.
Yeah, I agree. That'd be a big one.
And emailing the bills too. That was another thing that is not on there.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Someone did make that mention of adding email to the bills. That way we cut down on postage.
If people want that.
Yes, if they want it.
Yeah.
They have to sign up for it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Okay, so.
That's easy. Not easy, but.
I'll just add that to the agenda, and we'll, if you can, if you make progress, we can report on it. Okay, so that's finance. Public safety's not here, so we can, we'll skip that. The next one is streets and parks. Janet, what do you think is, we've got repaving program, developing a five-year plan, drainage issues. Now, the drainage issues, we weren't, and I know all the players have changed with the election, but Heinhurst, we did have some conversations.
And Don gave me the name of someone, and Heinhurst has said to contact him in January.
Okay.
So he's on my list.
Okay, good, all right. So you will be working on that?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, you'll be doing that.
And that, that's regarding identifying drainage, drainage issues.
Or looking at our plans.
Engineer, yes. I do, we're already two years ahead with our repaving, and I've already got two contracts for the next two years, or contracts for the next two years.
Do you have a, how, how do you keep that straight? In other words, how do you know who's next and who's had their, do you have some sort of a plan?
There was a plan that was developed, and don't quote me on what year it was, I think it was like five years ago. They had a company come in and evaluate every single road. Now, things have changed, obviously, they had to pay for that.
I think it was through a grant, though.
Was it?
I think, I think there was some kind of grant.
Okay, well, I know they paid for it.
An engineer came out and.
Yeah, I have the, I have the report. The only issue that I've got with that report is all of the new construction we've had since that report was created. You know, these construction vehicles are doing a lot of damage to our roads.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So roads that may have been at the bottom of the list are now coming up to the middle of the list. So what I've been doing with one of our asphalt companies every year, we drive around, and kinda, we look at the roads that we.
So you evaluate all of it?
Yeah, we, you know, I get his opinion. I've got the list of the ones that are on the list, but we drive around and look at the other roads too, that are possibly at the bottom, that I know that have been having a lot of heavy traffic. And, and I ask him to evaluate those roads as we're looking at them. So a road that may have been at the bottom could be moved up because of the construction traffic. But we're, there also are roads on there that could have been, say, number four or five, but now they're get, they're getting a lot of construction traffic on them, and we're not gonna redo them now until the construction traffic is done. Because why spend all that money? And, and I'll give you a prime example. Because why spend all that money? And, and I'll give you a prime example. South Shamrock was done in two thousand nineteen. And it's already, we're already doing massive crack filling on it.
Yeah.
And that's only been a few years.
And there's been a lot of construction on that, yeah.
So like, you know, Woodland Circle is taking a beating, uh, um, the, the wa, uh, Forest. Lake Forest.
Forest Lake.
Forest Lake, thank you, has gotten a huge beating. But there's a lot of construction traffic going up and down that road, and it doesn't make sense to repave it to just start filling cracks again. So every year we, we drive around and go, okay, we don't have a lot of construction traffic on this road. It's, it's time to do this road, cause it's gonna last.
So the evaluation is done by basically the asphalt company?
Well, from, from the report that we have, we work with that.
The original report from the engineer, which was done a long time ago.
No, about five, six years ago, I think. I love to look at the date.
But I think you bring up an awesome point that we should consider, which is five-year scope, this place looked a lot different.
Absolutely.
And I, and I'm wondering, and I don't know how much it costs to have an engineer come out and do that, or do the evaluation, but. I, I think it'd be interesting, I would be interested to know, as opposed to you eyeballing it.
Oh, no, it's not just me eyeballing it.
But I mean, it's the asphalt company, which of course, I, I'm not sure if we wouldn't want more of an independent analysis done as opposed to the asphalt company.
Yeah, but the asphalt company's gonna know, I mean, he has a good eye as to this road really needs to be done. And, I mean, this is what he does for a living, basically.
Well, that's my point exactly.
Is, but he's not always gonna get it.
An engineer is, is not tied to that part of it, and, and it just seems like we should do this on a routine, like every five years, we should probably have an engineer come out and look at it.
Well, I think the reason we did it, number one, is that there was a grant available, number one. That was the big reason we did it.
Okay.
And, and I guess we could check with the league to see if there are grants available for that now.
Well, if you don't agree with that, that's fine. I was just, it was just an idea that I had.
I, I'm just thinking that a lot of these, again, there's, there's firms, they, they can just get very, very pricey. And I think that if we can, um.
You know what, so, what do you, I don't know, what do you mean by, how much is pricey to you? What do you, what do you think?
Well, if they're fifty.
But we don't know, right? We never looked.
No, we've never done it, but I would think fifty, sixty grand wouldn't be out of the question.
And they're gonna justify their.
Their fee?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, they're kinda, at, at the same, but the asphalt company. But engineer, if you hire an engineering firm, they will justify that fee. And you might find out all kinds of stuff you don't even really need to know.
Okay, that's fine. I, I, I mean, if we know already.
Well, we know, we know, you've got the report from the, whatever company did it. Um, we could always look into that.
Or you could just hire him to look at our problem streets.
Well, and that's kinda why I drive around with the guy from the asphalt company.
Yeah.
And, and you know what? I mean, and he's been very honest, like North Shamrock. When we did repave North Shamrock, we went down the whole road, and he literally said to me, you do not have to do the rest of this road. It's not time for it. And you know, I, he had.
I trust that. I mean, the guy's, the guy's there to do a good job. I mean, he's honest. I mean, I wouldn't mind trusting him.
And, and, and really, all he had to say is, you gotta do the whole road. And he, he didn't have to do that. And he's been very honest about it. And, you know, I have a feeling with people. And, you know, we've gone through a couple of other roads, and I've said, what about this one? No, it's not time. Wait on that one. You have another road that's in worse condition.
Okay, I, I appreciate that, I do.
So, I mean, it's not just.
Does that tell you?
Yes.
I, I trust you on that for sure.
Well, and I think we could always, we could always call that company that did the original report and say, what would it cost to do it again? To come out and take, and take another look, and see what they say. I mean, usually quotes are for free, so.
Usually, usually.
Well, and here, here's my concern too. I mean, the asphalt company that we, we use for mainly all the roads here. He knows what's going on with the construction in the areas. I mean, I, I brought up Forest Lake Road, and he's like, you've got way too much construction coming down this road now. Don't do it. And if there's even a lot of vacant lots on the road, we probably wouldn't wanna do it because we're gonna get built anyway.
Yeah.
Yep, so, okay, so I don't think a development plan for the Village Green is what we need to be focusing on now.
No.
Or the general maintenance, well, general maintenance and repairs of park structures, you do that now.
Yes, I do.
So I think that's just an ongoing thing that, that happens. But I think this pool removal, this has gotta be a priority, I think. A cost-benefit analysis, and I think, obviously with finance, and you, and whoever else on the council wants to do some research.
Yeah, I wanna talk to you about some of them.
I think we need to, I know, we need to look at. Greenspace acquisition, I, I would really like to bump that down and put up, uh, and I think it's somewhere in here. I can't remember where it was.
Who, we just won't focus on that, right?
Okay, moving the yard waste facility.
Yeah, that's on someone else's plan, and you are on it too.
I think you put me on it, but I, I think we need to concentrate on that, starting in January.
I think that's on, on public safety, that's why we didn't get to it. It's on Don Nelson's list.
Oh.
With you.
Okay.
Along with parks and water.
But it does need the pool, it's like the number one.
Yeah, I mean, today, yes, obviously.
Yeah, yeah.
Until we figure out what we're doing with that pool, I'm not doing much of.
Yeah, cause that could, depending upon what this is, that might take your whole year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, now, what's next?
Um, well, next one is water. So. The well. The first thing on the infrastructure, you already, you had.
Did that first of the year, so that was done the first part of twenty twenty-three.
You did this on thing?
So that's already done.
Right, but where is it? Do you still have it?
I got when I presented to the council. It's on the, it's in the meeting notes. And all it was, was of a re-telling of what their cost estimates were, and who was it to be, I mean, it was just a recap.
See, I just don't, I just don't want this to get lost, and I think Lisa or Jesse should have it on file. If they don't, it should be something that we should say, hey, where's that feasibility study?
Well, if you look later on, that it's, it comes back up, in fact, I think it comes back up in year four or five.
No, it's not.
There was something in there that had to do.
Well, there's detailed plans for long-term future of the waters, the village water system. Oh, and provide financial plan to support alternative.
Yeah, like I said, it, it was, what, once we concluded, you know, and again, based upon what we have and what the cost was, it, it made absolutely zero sense.
No, I, no, I remember that, but.
I saw the notes. I still have that document. I can put it in record if you want, uh, uh, in a separate record if you want.
It should be, it should be, someone should have it in their office so that, you know, whether it's Lisa or, um, Jesse. Probably Jesse should have it in, um, special notebook or binder, say, you know.
Well, it's electronic, but, but I understand what you're saying.
Well, he almost should have it printed, so somebody could look at it if they wanted to. I, I would. Cause if it's electronic, he's the only one who knows where it is, you know?
Well, the actual paper copy, I don't know, I submit the paper copy. I guess I'll check with Lisa and see what she did with that.
If she's got it, I'd like to.
I sent it to her electronically too, so I thought she would, I thought she was finding those electronically. I didn't know we kept all that paper. But I get what you're saying. I will look into that.
Everything gets lost. It's just like, you know, everything else. If it's not, if it's not available or if it's in someone's computer and that person is no longer here, it's lost.
Gotcha.
So other than that, we really not searching for new well sites at this point.
Thankfully are not.
Cause we have our hands full with the one we just found. So this is the only thing on your list right now.
Well, I'm gonna be helping Jan.
Yeah, I got something I'd like you to help me with, going down here.
Oh, and Don too, because I'm gonna be helping out with the move, you know, moving the yard waste.
Oh, right, right, with, um, parks and water, yes.
And I think I'm, and I'm gonna be helping Jan.
That was in year two, though.
But I think we should say we're working on it now. It's gonna take a while. It's gonna take at least six months. Cause I.
Okay, so we're gonna move, so we're just gonna start, we're just pushing that up, and we're gonna start.
Well, yeah, well, year two, starting twenty-four, twenty, okay, I see, twenty-four doesn't start.
Well, is there anything, well, report on, right.
I keep forgetting. Okay.
But considering what's in year one here, there's no reason that we can't be planning for year two.
Yeah.
And that relocation. Cause we probably would have to reserve for that, because there's, there's a lot of cost involved in that.
Well, that's why I was planning, uh, you know, depending on how long I'm tied up with this pool. Uh, putting together a list of all of the quotes that we would need to move it, you know, contractors, blah, 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 what exactly we need, so we can start getting some costs. So when we do our budget, we can say, okay, this is what it's gonna cost us to move this.
So what I'm gonna do is, um, I'm gonna have under, well, under new business on the next council meeting, will be these bullet points that we're working on, and either we have updates or we don't. And it's just gonna, we'll just, that'll be kind of the structure for our meetings, unless priorities come up.
You mean at the work sessions?
No, well, work session, council meeting.
Okay.
It'll be both.
Yeah, I like, I do like that. I think it shows people, the residents, that we're, we're working on something.
We're working on what we said we were gonna work on.
That's what they asked us to.
Right. Alright, okay, so that's that. I think that's all I have. Mary?
I need about thirty seconds.
Okay.
Um, planning zoning is still working on updating the land use plan. I mean, it's got a fair number of updates to do just based on all the construction, the expansion of two eleven, all that, all that kinda stuff. But one of the things we were working on, and they're still working on, is trying to figure out when the village will build out. Okay, and I, I really, we went after that because we should be able, and, and I, is it laid in stone? Of course not. But if we can kinda get a solid estimate of how many homes we're building, two point five people per home is the average, we should be able to get close to knowing what we're gonna need infrastructure-wise and stuff like that when we're built. So if you look at, um, we broke it down two different ways, and the top one, in the current population, um, I got that from Lisa. We'll get the updated numbers for twenty twenty-three in September of twenty twenty-four, okay? So if you look at the projected population, including all undeveloped residential property within the corporate limits, two hundred and ninety-two properties, and Tasha did this, she is a G I S genius. And you can see right there, we would build out in twenty thirty-two, really, at two thousand five hundred and thirty-three residents. You have to understand that that includes some really big parcels that are the wild cards. Donnie Lee has a hundred and sixty acres on Woodland Circle. He's not generally viewed as a big developer. He's more of a land guy, which for us could be awesome. Satman has a property next to him, which is, it's good size, I don't know if it's thirty or forty acres. That's currently zoned, um, equestrian. And then you have Satman's other property down Foxfire Road that's a hundred and fifteen acres currently zoned equestrian. Those are the wild card properties. And you really don't know on those until someone approaches you and says, hey, here's what I'd like to do.
So we did, well, there's zones, equestrian.
Yeah, there's zone equestrian, but what I'm saying is, you wouldn't, if someone came in and said, hey, I wanna do a pud, and I wanna do patio homes, and I want some RS forties, and I want some horse farm, stuff like that. Those are some of the things we talked about for the Satman property down Foxfire Road. That'll change all these numbers.
Well, we, yes, you're right.
Yeah, don't, don't, if the.
I won't get into that discussion.
Yeah, the ones that we really, I think, can focus on are when we looked at the projected population, including only RS forty, RS thirty, RS twenty, and residential multifamily. Okay, because someone can come in on an RS forty lot today, submit building plans, and we can't say you can't build, right? I mean, if someone gives us a pud and we don't like it, you can, you know, you can do stuff with it, right? So if we looked at this, and of course residential multifamily, which we don't have much up.
Do we have any of it left?
Yeah.
Where?
Uh, we have some on the corner of, how much property did we buy from Satman? Cause he had it, and I.
Five.
Okay, wasn't that zoned RM?
No, I thought it was RM forty, wasn't it forty?
Then Mark Brenner's got some. There is, there is still some left in the village. There's not a lot. I'd have to go over to the zoning map and find it. But if you look at the, the smaller lots, if you said you had fourteen hundred and eight people in twenty twenty-two, and you're building forty-five houses per year, which is what we've averaged since twenty twenty. And you put two and a half people per house, our population at the end of twenty twenty-three should be something like fifteen hundred and twenty. Okay, if you take that, two hundred and thirty-four properties, and you divide by forty-five, you get five point two years before we're actually built out. So we rounded down to five. We plugged in the number of residents, and you're maxed out there with a build out of the smaller residential lots in twenty twenty-nine with two thousand one hundred and five people. So, I mean, if that helps us plan for police, office staff, whatever we need, and again, this is not, it's not done yet. But I think it's actually about as accurate as we're gonna get. At least it would give us something to work with, and the forty-five has been consistent. Could that change? Of course it could change. But we got a plan with something. And there is a point at which we're gonna be built out.
Yeah.
Yeah, which will be.
Five years from, like, five years from January.
Well, that's if we continue at the forty-five homes per year average.
Yep.
And, and now, did you guys take into consideration the unbuildable lots?
We did not. We talked about them, but the only way to really know that a lot is unbuildable, and we just had this happen on South Shamrock. Somebody bought one, it doesn't perk. Well, oops. But there's, yeah, there's really no way to know that until you perk it.
Was that next to the Johns?
That's next to, um, the, 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 John and Holly.
Oh, really? It didn't perk out, huh?
Yeah, and we certainly have some down on North Shamrock and stuff like that.
Oh, yeah.
But planning and zoning doesn't have the expertise to say, you're not perking, and we, we just, we don't know that. So like, is there a handful that won't perk? Yes.
Okay.
Plus, there'll be a handful that, that will never.
They'll never be built.
They'll be built because, you know, either they're owned by the same person, and if they're adjoining lots, and that's why they bought them.
Yeah, exactly.
It could be years before those are ever built.
Sooner, based on what's really gonna get built.
Right.
But anyway, I mean, if you have a better, more scientific method of doing it, please let us know.
I think this is pretty good.
No, it's, it's great, it's great information to have. It's great information. And I think the big thing for us is, you know, if these puds do come through, we have to, we have to really be thinking about what we want this village to look like.
Exactly.
And, and maintaining the, the, um, the feel that we've got.
One other thing I'll tell you is I went to a couple of work council sessions that the Moore County Commissioners did when they were starting to talk about doing their land use plan. There is a, a special meeting being held by the Commissioners on the eighteenth of January. It's, it's at Pinecrest, and I'm gonna go. Um, cause I wanna hear what they're really, what they're really thinking, because we're not affected by it, yet we could totally be affected by it. And I'm not sure how they're gonna look at it, and I'm pretty confident that I could stand up and say, hey, wait a minute. You know, on Jackson Springs Road, you have small area plan, you said two to five acres, because things change, and people, you know, people forget. And maybe they haven't lived here that long and stuff like that, so I'm gonna do everything I can to go.
Okay, good.
Yeah, cause we don't, we don't wanna catch that on the tail end.
No.
If we need to get up there and say, hey, wait a minute, this has a detrimental impact on Foxfire. This has a detrimental impact on our water supply. We need to be at the head of that game.
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
Good, thanks, Mary.
Thanks, Mary. This is great. Okay, and we don't have a fire and police update, cause Councilwoman Nelson is absent. And that's the end of our agenda.
Okay.
Public comments.
So are there any comments from the, from the, um, yes, for things that.
The peanut gallery.
Were on the agenda? State your name and address, please.
Norma Carpenter, seventy-one Richmond Road. I want to congratulate Mary and Jan for your jumping in and going to it. My question, of course, here's gonna be the pool. Really, a million dollars, uh, cause I'm being back there, Miss Snuggel. It said sixty to eighty, and that's a house pool. So if you tripled that, it would be two fifty, say, for a pool. Have, have, is it, I know some places do charge for, um, what you call them, estimates. Like, loads, they come out, you know, they'll charge for an estimate. But could we not get an estimate for a new pool, or have you done that?
Well, keeping my, um, and I discussed this with. Well, keep in mind, um, and I discussed this with Randy, um, the existing pool would need to be removed.
Yes, yes, that's why I was trying to see if there's a difference in the removal, and I thought, well, it's gonna be the same as the new one, because, but I didn't know, um, how much, I mean, really, if, we should not get an estimate if we can get it without a cost.
Well, that's part of our cost benefit analysis that we're gonna be doing. And also you have to remember is, is that as a municipality, we have got to comply with a lot of.
A lot of, oh, I know.
A lot of ADA and safety and.
And a lot of probably grandfathered in there.
Yes, it is.
Right, which we, which we.
We are not ADA at this point.
No, no.
And again, grandfathered in, that we don't have to be.
Yeah.
But once you start doing any of that.
They knew it's all, gotta be, I don't know, we were thinking this at Moose Lodge.
Yeah, if you're talking in this, I mean, it wasn't just putting in a new pool somewhere else.
Yeah.
Because first of all, where would it go?
No, no, I know.
We'd have to literally remove the whole pool, basically.
And you're probably gonna tear it down that building, too.
Uh, I'd like to keep the building.
Yeah, I was.
It's kind of brand new.
With the new, I mean, with the rules they have now.
Yeah, but no, we, you're talking at least a million dollars, start to finish, taking it up, putting a new, and these are some met pools, and.
Yeah, and that's a big pool. It's a nice big pool.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, and I talked to, I talked to a couple of different people, and they all said the same thing, about a million dollars.
Well, I'm not a big fan of throwing good money after bad.
And that's. We're gonna do, we're gonna get the facts and present.
But I'd like the pool, and I gotta, you know, we got a group of ladies that love the pool, and I don't think, yeah, I don't think, you know.
I'm sure anyone that goes loves it.
And, but that's, you're right, that, not that many people care.
Right.
And, uh, so.
And I like it. Believe me, I like the pool. But, you know, when you're looking at the tax dollars that are being spent, and just this coming year, it would be about a hundred, well, things are going up too, so you figure about a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot of money, that's what.
That's a couple, that's at least one street for me.
But you're right, we need to do our due diligence, and not just drop numbers.
Yep, absolutely. Or opinions.
Or opinions, nilly-nilly. We need to make sure that we know exactly what we're talking about, and I think that's a good point.
Well, I want y'all to, I appreciate all the hard work and help and to keep our village top-notch, because I love it here.
Well, we thank you for your input too, because we need everybody's input. We want it.
Okay, that's it, I guess, huh?
All right, um, well, with that, any other comments?
Nope.
All right. Meeting is adjourned.